I will bring our meeting to order. As you know, we're having our -- I don't know if this could actually be called a retreat. And probably that's good because I would say that what the last thing we need is a retreat. The thing we really need is to figure out how we want to move forward. So, and I just want to take this moment to say how much I appreciate our city council, city manager, our staff, everybody, because I think we have such an abundance of people who really want to do the best for this community, whether it's your job or your elected position. I don't know anybody who doesn't want to do good for this community. And that's something we share, no matter what our points of view are, that's what we share, wanting this community to be the best community it can be for the lives of the families that live here and everyone who lives here, to have this be a great place to live now and into the future. And I think that's what we're all about all the time, and that makes me easy for me to talk about you all and easy for me to have pride in our city because you all do such a really phenomenal job. So, thank you very much. And so, we're focused today on where we want to go in the future and what we care about and what we want to really work toward. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to city manager, and we will move forward with our meeting today.
Thank you, Mayor, very much, and we very much appreciate it being a part of this conversation as well. And I'll introduce Lizbeth, who will help facilitate us this evening. Thank you for doing that. I'll introduce her with just a quick bio so you'll understand that she comes to us extremely well-qualified to help us in our work. Lizbeth has been facilitating meetings for more than 30 years with a strong emphasis on consensus decision-making. She has worked with a variety of nonprofit and government organizations, businesses, schools, and community groups in the Pacific Northwest and nationwide. Lizbeth's work with governmental organizations includes facilitating annual goal-setting processes for the Salem City Council in 2001 and 2. She also facilitated a series of meetings to establish the Eugene Sustainability Commission, working with city staff to lead the commission through a process from its first meeting to generating its first work plan over the course of five months. She has also served as an adjunct faculty member at Rudolph Steiner College, where she taught in the administration program from 2008 to 2010. She'll be teaching facilitation at the U of O's graduate program, Conflict and Dispute Resolution, this spring. And so, with that, Lizbeth, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very happy to be here to help move things along for your retreat, or whatever else we might call it. Hopefully, it won't be a retreat, but an advance.
That's right. We'll call this our advance.
Yes, great. So, my understanding, or hope, is that, as far as I understand, we were to do this as one meeting of two, so there's a plan or hope at this point for a follow-up. Tonight, we just wanted to go over the agenda briefly, very simple agenda, hopefully nothing too baroque. We wanted to take a look at and share your best and worst outcomes for the community for 2015, 2015, 2016, and have the city councilors and executive team do that. Then Sarah Mederi is going to share visions, goals, and outcomes, sort of where we've been, in terms of manifesting and moving forward on the Eugene Counts process that was done some years back. We'll have some questions and answers after that. And then John Reese will give us an overview of the financial picture, looking at the fair, stable, and adequate financial resources goal from that Eugene Counts process. Then we'll take a short break, and from there, we'll move into some small groups to give you all a chance to participate and really put out some ideas, dreams, and hopes that you have within that wider rubric of goals and intentions that was set in terms of what would you like to see happen, things that you're proud of, that you'd like to see us build on, and where there are opportunities. And then we'll just wrap up the end, to sort of extract or distill whatever people heard and some common themes that you've heard out of those conversations. And hopefully, that will take us to about 9:30.
Great.
Okay? So, at this point, any questions about that before we move onward?
I just wanted to save the record that Councilor Pollard is not here because his mother is ill, and Councilor Clark called this afternoon to say that he had a fever and was sick, and so he's got what's been going around, and we're glad he's not here. Anyway, just want to be sure everybody knew that that was why they were not here.
Okay, thanks. So, as we do often do to get everyone's voice in the room, we wanted to begin with this process of putting out, thinking about, and sharing your ideas for your best and worst outcomes for this coming fiscal year, I'm assuming, right? 2015 to 2016. And so, we'd like to have everyone write down their best and worst outcomes for the community, for the community as a whole. So, please write down your worst outcomes for 2015. On one side, you should have a three-by-five card in front of you. Let me know if anybody's short a pen. And then, if you haven't already, please think about your best outcomes. So, flip the card over and put your best outcomes on the back. Can we take maybe one more minute to wrap up? So, is there someone who's ready, who would like to start by reading your worst outcomes for 2015, and then we'll just head around clockwise from there? Yes, Councilor Surratt?
I'll start. So, my worst outcome would be that our community is fractured and at odds over perceived ideological and geographical differences. Pretty broad, but...
We are reactive to the many issues that come before, trying to keep up with a myriad of issues facing our community. We stay the same facing budget issues and unresolved community issues. We are a community that feels helpless under the many issues. We fail to take bold steps to meet the budget and policy issues facing us.
What I've said is that the pending elections divide the community, focusing on what isn't working rather than possibilities.
The progress we've worked so hard on comes to an abrupt halt. The community can't catch up with wages, and we find ourselves digging back out of challenging economic times.
Five bullets for me. Homelessness, homelessness issues and poverty, unstable revenue, gangs, property crime, personal crime, a lack of staff capacity, means our staff is pretty stretched thin right now in all areas, and a lack of recreation and sports facility capacity.
A community continues to be plagued by financial uncertainty and don't see a recovery in their personal lives, and the community as a whole continue, or divided by issues such as, you know, the issues of the day, homelessness, or kind of the problems rather than able to work together to find solution. And then, a little bit like yours, that our children have resources available to them, whether it be sports fields or activities, and that we start looking to our children to help us, or unable, never mind, I'm going to the best outcomes.
Just like you. Worst outcomes.
Spoiler alert.
Okay, my worst outcome is the inability to move forward due to the inability to reach agreement on a resolution.
Our community loses its forward momentum, relationships deteriorate, people begin leaving our area in search of economic stability.
Mine are our failure to support parks and libraries financially, economic stagnation or downturn, environmental degradation, and no movement forward on key issues.
So, mine are community members feel unsafe and quality of life degrades, progress achieved does not continue, and community loses trust in city leaders and city organization.
There's less collaboration by the public in finding and implementing solutions to stubborn problems, and there's a loss of confidence in municipal government.
Destruction of agricultural land and more tax exemptions for developers.
Mine were financial or budgetary overreaction to an improving economy, as evidenced by, for example, we find a dollar and spend five of them.
Budget situation worsens, less revenue, smaller general fund leads to more service cuts.
Similar to what Claire started with, the community becomes more polarized over issues like homelessness and Envision Eugene, and the city is not able to make progress on solving such issues.
Thank you. So, can we keep going with best outcomes?
So, our community comes together around plans for rebuilding our library and park systems, as well as other community priorities.
Mine is we are successful at identifying key community issues, offering real concrete and doable ways to move forward on things like budget, homelessness, economy, climate, take substantial steps toward a sustainable budget and in meeting our triple bottom line needs. We gain confidence in our ability to meet challenges and even surpass them.
Economic prosperity begins to take hold for all community members as the financial picture brightens.
We pause and reflect on the progress we've made and prepare for the future in a way that allows us to achieve more results for the community than we think even possible today.
Envision Eugene, Bethel Economic Development Planning, paid sick leave ordinance implementation, and creating opportunity for disadvantaged businesses, minority business enterprises, women, and emerging businesses.
Part of a strong economic recovery, our community as a whole, and we're inspired to come together to address the larger community issues and work to create a strong parks and library system.
Continued progress on downtown, the riverfront, infrastructure, homelessness, and economic prosperity.
We continue our forward progress towards building a complete community that is financially sustainable, produces living wage jobs, continues the forward progress downtown, and supports all people.
Fully funded parks, libraries, and schools, public support for the city and the council, moving forward on key issues and projects, cleaner, healthy environment, and substantially more living wage jobs.
We continue to celebrate successes. The community continues to thrive and firmly establishes a reputation for being the best place for everyone to live and work. And then, we identify solutions for parks, recs, rec, and libraries, and we continue to build on trust, so it's never questioned.
Our community has a well-founded confidence in economic growth. There's an improvement to jobs. There is better education and capacity for our children's education, and there's a greater sense of safety across Eugene. And we see ourselves as the community that innovates and finds smart solutions to difficult problems.
I'm not even running for mayor, but I have a lot of things here.
Could, Betty, you could.
A single occupancy, low-cost building of some sort, hotel or apartment building. And we save Civic Stadium, and living wage ordinance, strong tree protection ordinance, free parking in all of downtown, design standards for all buildings.
Continued economic recovery leading to a sustainable budget, particularly with regard to parks, operations, maintenance, funding, and future decisions are based upon clear and objective goals and desired outcomes.
Budget situation improves, more money in general fund, services restored and expanded, new programs are initiated.
Numerous living wage jobs are created, raising the standard of living for a lot of people in the community, and we're able to develop and implement a sustainable budget.
Okay. Thank you so much. We are, at this point, a bit ahead of our agenda, actually, but unless we, unless there's any burning comments, we can head onward. So, thank you for your... Yes, Mayor.
I'm sure we'll do this, but my only burning comment would be, I heard many things that we all share, and my burning comment would be that we really look at that and try to put that together in a way that will really help move us forward.
Thank you. So, Sarah?
Yep, I might actually get us back on track since we go longer than initially anticipated, potentially. This has been really fun for me because, in addition to kind of giving you a highlight of where we've been, it's also been an opportunity for me to kind of just reflect on my own career and time in the city manager's office, because it's essentially been this entire time. So, I'm happy to be able to start this evening's work with a brief but important reflection on where we've been and traveled over the last six or so years. I chose the image of the Oregon Trail because it has been a long and challenging journey during which many objectives have been met. And like the Oregon Trail, it's not any single objective or outcome you've reached, but the scale of all of the organization's accomplishments during a significant and prolonged economic downturn. Your trail isn't physically the same as what Lewis and Clark attempted, but this graph of Oregon's unemployment numbers looks a lot like a cascade mountain elevation and gives a clear representation of the community challenges you have been working through. So, I know you can't see this number here. There is a presentation in the back of your materials that I gave you a hard copy of. But right here is about 2008, 2009. I just like to point out, this is pretty much where John came to the city of Eugene. And this is kind of our unemployment, as it has risen over quickly and fast and very steep, and then how we've been working hard, although it's sort of flip-flopped, it tells kind of a good story.
That's actually when I was elected.
When you were, high school? It was the beginning of that long climb that you started to define the outcomes you hoped to achieve. 2009 was your first two-day workshop with Bob Chadwick and the start of many listening circles and three-by-five cards filled with best and worst outcomes. During this initial workshop, you talked a lot about community culture and created collective best outcomes of bringing the community together. In the end, you gave advice to the mayor and city manager on next steps to take. Some of that advice was very specific about returning soon with work sessions to revise and rework your goals and to develop related strategies and outcomes. You immediately began revising the goal statements. You might remember some of those work sessions as we replaced and added words and revised and edited until we had council consensus, complete council consents on the vision and goal statements. It was at this point that you asked staff to find out what the community needed to see happen to feel those goals were being met. We launched Eugene Counts as a process of engaging with the community to determine the concrete results community members most wanted to see. And now, I've just kind of taken some of these slides from earlier presentations, but here's kind of where we went. We went out, we did a lot of surveys, we did focus groups, we tailgated at the University of Oregon football games, we went to the Saturday market. In all in all, we got all over Eugene. I know you can't see this very well, but each one of these little dots represents survey response or somebody that we talked to in the community that we have an address for, and each of the red pens indicates an event we held. So, you can see we had really good geographic distribution, and over that time, we talked to about 1,000 community members. We heard a lot, and I'm going to, we heard a lot by goal area, and I'm going to just use this one example of Safe Community, where we took all that information and we said, okay, under the, you know, under the goal statement, generally, where did people say they wanted you to focus your energy? And so, you see a lot of kind of just themes of people want to feel safe walking, visible police presence. We clustered things together around crime, property crime, violent crime, and went on down the line. Interesting, as I was going through this, that I think there's some things that are the same, whereas you had about 16% of people saying they wanted to see fewer visible homeless and less panhandling, and you had about the same number of people saying they want to see the homeless treated kindly and more social services. So, we did that for all of the goal areas. We also found that there were areas that were themes that went across all of the areas. So, for example, downtown was mentioned by lots of community members in every single goal area language that you had. The same was said for economic development, communication, jobs, and alternative transportation. You were able to work through all of that information and develop a set of outcomes to focus on over the following years. There's a one-page document at your place for reference going forward, and that's really also what's on the walls over here under the big banners, those outcomes. We hope that at 5:00, people would have an opportunity to get here and eat and kind of take a look at some of the accomplishments under each of those and also the projects that are underway. And but wait, there's more. We're sure we left something off, and so, as the night goes on and probably at future meetings, feel free to add to it with post-it notes or just write on the posters, because we want to make sure we kind of capture generally all that's happened during this time, because as you know, it's been, it's been a lot. And when you think about how tough the economic times has been, it's pretty impressive. So, I'm going to kind of go through each of these goal areas, and I'm really only going to hit on two to four of each of the things, so mostly to tell the story and kind of set the stage for tonight. So, here's, you know, what you said you wanted to achieve under Safe Community. We heard a lot about downtown safety, and we responded. Seven employees were added to the downtown team to develop a nine-person team focused on downtown and the core. They're housed at a new substation in the downtown LCC building that was constructed in one of the now almost mythical pits. This team has leveraged many partnerships with other entities downtown and is also working closely with the new and second cahoots unit. Citywide, we have seen excellent results from shifting to a data-led policing model that has allowed targeted and efficient deployment of resources. We repurposed an existing building to develop a new police headquarters and have leveraged partnerships inside the organization on safety efforts such as the Park Watch program. One of the words you changed in your goal statement was a community where all people are safe, not just feel safe. Efforts to help the unhoused in developing safe places to sleep have been an important focus as you have expanded the car camping program and pioneered new service models such as Opportunity Village and the rest stops. And we have continued developing our national reputation as being leaders in municipal government, one of which was the merger of the Eugene and Springfield Fire Departments. This not only saved taxpayers' money, but improved services across both Eugene and Springfield. Sustainable development, the things you wanted to achieve. Starting with our core, you can look at the back windows and see where it all started, and that was with the filling of the pits. The LCC building and the Woolworth, Center Court and Taco Time, the S-hole, the A-hole. Downtown came alive with over $200 million of investments during a time most would have said it wasn't possible. Our community asked us to invest in our transportation infrastructure, and we responded with $44 million in voter-approved investments that have repaired 103 miles of streets and over five miles of off-street bike paths and other bike and pad improvements. Not only have we continued to invest in growing and retaining our local businesses through programs such as the Business Development Fund, but we've partnered regionally on economic prosperity. And also at your PACs, you'll see, and coming in a future work session, there's a kind of a matrix of all the different items that are going on related to the Economic Prosperity Summit clustered and sorted by the focus areas you wanted to. We'll come back to that. You may want to use it to talk more tonight. Prosperity and livability have been at the core of much of Envision Eugene, and we have worked hard to balance all the pillars while still moving forward with a plan to accommodate a growing population. While some bigger decisions are still to be made, we've made progress along the way, including code amendments that support desired development downtown, along transit quarters and core commercial areas. The triple bottom line has become the standard. It started with a framework and a toolkit, but has evolved as part of the organizational culture. Accessible and thriving culture and recreation. Perhaps one of the greatest achievements in this area is not what you see built on the ground, but the efficiencies made and services kept during a time of financial scarcity. The approach to the budget and to achieving results across all goal areas is at the heart of why families were able to access these valuable and necessary services during a time of uncertainty and fear. With that, there have also been some... With that, there have also been some amazing new investments, like the construction of the Washington Park Spray Play Area, the Washington Jefferson Skate Park in Urban Plaza. We've also added a new privately managed 18-hole disc golf course and added legacy properties to our parks and open spaces in Ridgeline Trail System. We increased partnerships and focus on the connection of arts and business through efforts such as the Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene and Eugene Agogo, and we sold a parking lot to the shed in order to provide space and certainty for their planned expansion in the downtown. In addition to the future, we've taken big steps in understanding and protecting what we have through efforts such as the Public Arts Master Plan. Effective, accountable municipal government. We got wordier as the time went on, I noticed every word, there was just more and more words, it started very briefly, got bigger. Eugene Counts and the outcomes I'm speaking to say a lot about how we have worked with the community to achieve measurable and positive outcomes. We've had multiple years of reduced budgets and worked hard to maintain and improve services where we could. One area of investment and effort was the replacement of the city's website. It's fundamentally improved the community's access to all that we do and created a foundation for catching up and moving forward in a fast-paced digital environment. Not only does it look and feel better, it has allowed improvements to meeting agendas, materials, archives, and perhaps most importantly, it has facilitated easy online reporting and tracking of issues for our community. One of the items you can request online is a building inspection. Seems simple enough, but you can do it through a smartphone application, it's just one example of the many ways in which the Permit and Information Center has innovated to rapidly respond to the quickly evolving needs of the community. Our digital footprint has grown to increase access and deliver results. Our electronic maintenance management system and public works has created a direct link from a community member with a concern to a pending work order and resource deployment and a few punches on a phone or keystrokes on a computer. Oops, sorry, I didn't move forward. There, quick, it's in your packet. Fair, stable, and adequate financial resources. John's actually gonna talk about this slide in his next presentation, but I wanted to give a few highlights in the realm of accessible and transparent. Our website allowed service areas such as budget to revamp and provide a much better platform and site to engage with our financial information, and this has been critical for the public to understand and gather the information they need to communicate their concern and priorities. The last point I'd like to highlight is that we have not done any of this alone. Together, we have reached out to many community members to participate in a variety of discussions related to fair, stable, and adequate. From community members asked to meet the challenge to the finance investigative team, we've asked many to participate in shaping Eugene's current and future. We've been grateful for all who have served and helped inform our decisions such as the Budget Committee, the Street Repair and Urban Renewal Expenditure Committees, and all of the community members who engaged and testified throughout the process. I know that each exec will also tell you that the work you see highlighted on the walls is a tribute to the talented and dedicated employees that serve you and the community every day. They've made efficiencies and sacrifices and have always kept your community vision at the core of what they do. So, that's, I mean, I didn't even touch on City Hall and so many of the other things, and they're really just kind of speaking to you from the, from the west wall. And with that, I think we can either answer questions about Eugene Counts, or you can dive into the last slide.
Would you like to do?
We were, we're gonna move into Q and A, so, any questions? Any questions for Sarah?
What's the timeframe network? When was Eugene Counts first?
We started, the first meeting with Bob Chadwick was in 2009, and we worked through 2010 on Eugene Counts, so it's about a five-year.
So, all these accomplishments are like 2010 to 2014?
For the most part, yes.
Other questions? Yes, Mayor?
I question just some comments, and I can make them here, they're probably gonna fit in as we go through, but this weekend, when I was in DC at a conference, one of the things that got brought up that I think is important for us to think about tonight is, we talk a lot about reaching out to people and involving them in our process, and one of the things, that example that they gave that may be helpful tonight for you to think about, is they were talking about, the mayor in one city was driving through a part, a poorer part of town and noticed a streetlight was out. And so, he decided he would do something about that, so he had his staff look at the streetlights and found out that in that particular area of town, there were 98 streetlights that were out, but nobody complained. Other parts of town, there'd be one streetlight out, and people would be on the phone immediately. This part of town, nobody complains because they either don't have the time or feel empowered enough to complain. So, one thing that then made me, I think that's a very insightful thing, is that we tend, as a council and as staff, to respond to the people who knock on our, knock on us and say, pay attention to me, pay attention to me, but there's a whole realm of people out there that who don't do that, who have just as much need. And so, as you think about what we do, you should think about the people who are always at us to be paying attention to an issue, but you think of, you should also, at the same time, be thinking of the people that we never hear from, because it's just not in their realm to think that we're gonna respond to what they, they care about, they just put up with it. So, just wanted to put that out on the, I think it's just so easy not to think about the people who aren't bothering you. And we really need to think about who are we not hearing from as much as the people we are hearing from. So, just, and the other thing that I heard this weekend, it was really meaningful to me in terms of policy, police policies and mental health policies and drug addiction and all of those things that sort of drive our law enforcement, is that there's a move in this nation right now to move us from treating addiction as a public safety issue and to begin to treat it as a health issue. And they bring very different people to the table and, and bring a very different discussion and share burdens in places that we don't normally do. And I think we would all agree, no matter where we are, that right now, we're asking our police force to be everything. We're asking them to be our social service providers, we're asking them to take on our mental health issues, we're asking them to take on the addiction issues, and we probably need to be looking at it in a much broader framework and partnership with other people in our area, because we, those are not things that are ours alone, they are shared things, just like the homeless issue is. So, I just wanted to bring those things up for you all to sort of put in the box to think about as we go through these things tonight.
Other, yes, councillor?
I would, I would add to that, Mayor, I think you ought to add in that the fire department does a whole lot in that regard, as well as public works. Because you're, you know, I went out with the fire department this past summer, and I see how stressed they are, because they're the first responders when people who are homeless or on the streets or getting sick, ill, or have some kind of crisis, they're there a lot of times before the police get there. And, you know, they're having to grapple with hauling them off to Riverbend or wherever the case may be, you know, in dealing with these issues, and our system is overtaxed, overstressed, and understaffed. And I think that that, you know, people don't want to talk about adding, you know, public employees, but, you know, I think it's a necessity for us to have a real, honest conversation with our community about the importance of public employees and the need for public employees, and stop, you know, this whole thing about beating up on public employees, because, you know, those are the people you call when you need them, and they come, and they're there, and, you know, it's just not, you know, waste, fraud, and abuse.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mayor?
I just wanted to, to spend one more minute on that because of what you, I agree with everything you said, Greg, but I think what I'm looking at is not so much whether we're adequately staffed, but I'm looking at how we look at the, look at the responsibilities differently, how we bring more people to the table and sort of shift the, the burden, so to speak, and, and not only within ourselves, but more broadly with the larger community, the county, and all of our partners. And I think that's, that's, in many ways, that's, that's an approach we really need to think more often about when it comes to these huge issues that we're trying to grapple with, and in many cases, we're trying to carry it ourselves, and I just don't think that that's, there's a, there's a, probably a better way for us to do that.
So, councillor Solinka, and then, Mayor?
You know, in a, in an era where we're constantly bombarded with negativity, and especially around government, and, and what government doesn't do or fails to do, and a lot of it's unfair, and I personally don't believe it, then I look at this, and I look up there, and I'm blown away by that. I'm very, very impressed, and I only got through the first cheat. And so, often in these kind of, we don't celebrate the successes we've had, we've got a lot of successes here. It's amazing what we've done in an era where we, where we had the lowest and reduced down to the lowest per cap, employees per capita, some of the lowest budgets per capita, and, and yet, we're able to accomplish all of this. And I, I think it's really a factor of how great our staff is and what the community does, but I don't think that we get enough recognition. I'd really like to see this stuff artfully put up on our website in a way that's accessible to people, you know? There's a lot of people that say, you know, when government doesn't accomplish anything. Well, yeah, that's not true. There's a lot of accomplishments that occur here, and I think they're really significant. And, and most importantly, I think they actually impact people's lives. Government has a big role in people's, making people's lives bigger and better and have increased quality of life, and that's what I think a lot of these are.
Okay, councillor Fer.
Actually, this builds a little bit on what both Alan and the mayor are talking about. A word that really impacts me a lot, because I'm, I deal with a lot, is the notion of engagement. The last job I left before I retired, when my title was engagement, and I had to spend a lot of time thinking about what engagement is, and it goes beyond just informing. We talk a lot about, we need to share this, that's what Alan's saying, we need to get this information out, we need to share it with this community and create greater awareness around it, and that's a good thing to do, and we definitely want to do that, but if you look at all that list of accomplishments in there, you then have to look at that list and say, what on that list would actually engage the public? And by that, I mean, would, they would actually feel a sense of commitment to. Because engagement is awareness, but it's also commitment. When I get engaged, that's a commitment, and when you engage with a community, that's also a commitment. And what is it that we need to do to create a commitment between us and our public? Which things on that list create that commitment? And it's not the whole list, it's only certain things on there. And so, we need to be able to talk about the things we've done that actually will have a connection to the community, that they can relate to and that they will feel has a payoff or a benefit directly to them. That's the real nature of engagement. And so, I think if we spend a lot of time just communicating stuff, that's cool and that's nice, but we need to ramp it to another level that says, what do we need to do to get the public committed? And what I liked about the Eugene Counts process was, you can start to get commitment when you actually talk to people and they are allowed to talk back to you. And so, the two-way communication is one thing, the ability to ask them not only, or tell them what we're doing, but ask them what they want us to do, which is what was alluded to when we looked at the little bubbles and said, this is what our public wants us to do, but then we have to respond to that. So, I, what I'm saying is, this is great, but we have to look at this through fresh eyes and say, which elements of this are the truly engaging elements that will, that will cause us to be connected to our community and not just interesting information? And how do we do that? How do we truly create engagement and not just information sharing? And I don't know, but we need to, we need to figure out that strategy, because that's the, what's gonna really create the trust, we talked about earlier. Trust comes from engagement, not just from informing.
Great, thank you. So, at this point, I'm hoping you'll take all of those thoughts as we move into our small groups after a break, but for right now, time to hear from the city manager.
Great. I'll choose to use the whiteboard.
That's a John thing.
We would worry, we'd worry if you weren't committed to the whiteboard.
I know.
Yeah. And hopefully more people.
I'm gonna take your plate.
And sitting in circles.
Okay.
What I wanted to talk briefly about is, a little bit about the, the journey we've been from a financial and budget perspective, but to also, I'll jump right to the bottom line. The really good news is there's no gap to fill in the general fund as we go forward for next year's budget. And I think that's as a result of a lot of hard work, and I want to talk, it's a great story that we got there. And so, I want to just talk a little bit about that story, just as a quick reminder. And then, where we sit really offers us an opportunity to pivot and to think about the future and not have to think about the past as much. And so, that's an opportunity as we, as we think about that. So, as, as we remember, as we remember, when we first started into this journey of ours way back in 2008, we started off with, really even going into that budget with a $1 million structural imbalance. And when we talk about structural imbalance, what we mean is, is that our expenditures are greater than our revenues. And so, we had this gap even before the recession hit. The other piece that we were also responsible for, there had been a policy decision made that we needed to incorporate $5 million worth of library levy into the general fund. And so, that was a policy that a, a previous council had made, and so, we're on the brink of doing that as well. The recession hit, and what we know is, the economy dived pretty quickly. Part of that marker for us, that we think about, is Hynix. They went out of business pretty quickly in 2000, 2009, they closed 1,200-plus jobs, as well as at least $2 million worth of property tax and silt into our general fund. And then, the economy just continued to sort of dampen from there, and you might remember in those early years, we went pretty quickly to a $12 million gap that we had to fill. And what we said collectively as part of our budget strategy is, in order, as filling that $12 million gap, we wanted to maintain services as much as we possibly could. We also wanted to minimize the impact on employees, and the way we said that really was, is we didn't want to lay people off for a lot of reasons. Several were, we wanted to respect and honor the work that employees have done over time. We didn't want our talent to leave the organization, we didn't want to make the unemployment situation worse in the community by laying off an employee. And even though we've eliminated 100 positions over the last five years, there have been very few employees that have involuntarily left the organization. Now, that doesn't mean employees haven't been impacted. We've asked them to work differently, some cases, they're working different hours, they're working different jobs, and so, it hasn't been without effort and sacrifice, but we've worked really hard at not laying off employees in this environment. We also said through all of this, we wanted to stabilize our budget. And when we talk about stabilizing budget, what we said is, let's live within our means, where our revenues are equal to or greater than our expenditures, and that we have a reasonable and responsible savings account also in which we could then help mitigate through any of the storms that come up. And, we said we also want to continue to invest into the community, because what we didn't want to do was just strictly focus inward and try to just survive through the recession, what we said is, we actually want to not only thrive and continue to provide services and investments in the community who was continually wanting and asking for and had expectations for a whole host of services. And so, as you can see, as part of that, that was being over the last five years, is our continued investment into the community despite the worst economic times since the 1930. So, I think it is a, a testament to some pretty talented people in our organization. And so, what this is, we all know, got to be $30 million gap that we have filled over the last five years, and just as a reference point, in the general fund, our general fund's 120 to 125 million dollars, so it's a 20% plus gap that we've filled. And our mantra has been, use one time, don't use one-time money for ongoing expenses. So, what that actually has done is allowed us to fill the gap, and so, today, as we look forward, that strategy has worked, and so, we're at a place now. And so we're at a place now where we have a stable budget. What that stable budget means is, is that for our portfolio of services that we currently provide, we can afford. It means we've also built in to that budget Sheldon Branch Library as an ongoing cost, as opposed to a one-time cost at which put in for this budget, so it's ongoing cost. And the other piece that we put into that stable budget, on several of our internal service funds, and those are facilities and fleets and our computers and technologies, they carry their own savings account as well. And so as we've been working through the last five years, as they've been balancing their budgets, they've also been using some of their reserves and draining down their savings account in order to sort of buoy up their portion of the budget as we've gone. As part of a stable budget, we're able to stop that leakage out of their savings account as well. And so when we talk about a stable budget going forward, what we're able to do with the revenues that are coming in is current portfolio, Sheldon Branch Library, and stop the leakage out of some of these other funds. So it feels like we now have an opportunity to pivot from thinking about, how do we fill past gaps or current gaps, to really a sustainable budget that we've talked about in the past, and how do we pivot to that place? And the sustainable budget really is about, what do we want the future to look like? And so we can spend time talking about libraries of the future. We've had some conversations about ongoing, what should parks and open space maintenance truly look like? How do we protect the community's investment in infrastructure, in roads and parks and facilities? And so we don't have to think about how we're closing the gaps. We can kind of say, okay, the current budget is stable, we can afford that. We don't have the money yet to afford sustainability, but it now gives us a chance to start thinking about where we want to go into the future as opposed to filling up the past. And so I think that leads really well into your conversation tonight about, how do we want to focus going forward? So, any thoughts on any of that? It's actually a really good story over time, and what all of you have accomplished. Yes, Mayor?
I'd say it's good, but not good enough. In terms of, with all the good work people did to hold on to things while we were in the recession, we pared down a lot of really important things. And so it seems like the question before us right now that we talked about in our library discussion is, do we just try to put back what we lost, or do we look into the future and say, here's where we're going as well? And that's kind of one of the discussions at hand.
I think it is exactly an important part of the discussion. The default function often is, is how do we refill the $30 million bucket? Reality is, is we're not going to recapture $30 million. I mean, that's a significant amount of money. Even as the economy recovers over the next several years, that $30 million isn't coming back. And the reality is, we may not want to just go back and refill the same buckets that we had filled before. And partly, we're in a place now financially and also organizational, the capacity of the organization is such, is we can start focusing on the future and what do we want into the future, not what do we want to continue to bring forward from the past exclusively. And so it is, it's a great place to be, to pivot around. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a great place to be, too. It's a great transformation, a lot of us to do with the economy, and we did take chunks out of the service profile of the city and things that might be gone forever, and we do need to have a conversation about what gets restored, but also how does that look like, what does it look like in the future, so that we're restoring the right things? I think this, the last budget was the 18th budget that I did as a budget committee and a city council, and I think all but two of them have been cut, cut, cut. It would be refreshing not to have that kind of mentality going into the next budget, or have to be able to make those really hard choices.
So he, I probably won't frame this exactly right, but what I really want to hope that we talk about is what we want to do, rather than how much do we have and what can we do with what we have. It's more about what do we want to do and how do the resources we have move us in that direction? So for me, it would be figuring out what our goals are within the realm of knowing what we know, and then figuring out how we best allocate our resources to meet those goals, which in part may be what we have done in the past, and in part it might be doing them in a very, in a very different way, or not doing some things and more of other things. But just sort of, it's a temptation to try to figure out what your pot is and what you can stick in the pot, as opposed to where you really want to go and how you will take the limited resources you have to go in that direction.
I remember once being in a presentation where the guy who was like the operational manager for the Portland Trailblazers said, when he would do planning sessions, they, one of the first ways they'd do it was they'd look at the money they have, and they'd say, what can we do with the money that we've got? And they always felt frustrated by the fact that they were at this kind of minimal but stable level. They were not reaching outside the box. And he said, what about if we were to sit around and say, what is the aspiration? What would we like to achieve? And then the very next question would be, what will it take to get there? And it became kind of their, it's like when we talk about what's your best outcome and your worst outcome, it becomes that automatic thing you say, I'd like to aspire to this, but what will it take to get there? And then we collectively say, okay, we're now committed to doing what it takes to get there, because we now understand what it will take. But I don't remember, even in the context of a budget conversation, of us ever saying, I'd like to go there, and what will it take to do it? I mean, we dance around it, but I'd love to have a really good conversation and say, boy, would I like to go to this place, and what would it take to get there? And then for all of us to contribute to deciding what it takes to get there. And if we're truly committed to getting there, I think we'll come up with a way to get there. The Trailblazers did, he said that strategy worked phenomenally well.
And I think that's, the place where we are right now financially allows that conversation to happen, because, I think of it in the context of an emergency operations. If we have a large earthquake here in town, what happens immediately is, water pipes break and sewers overflow, and the electricity goes down, and roads are blocked, and fires start, and all that happens. And so you spend a lot of time trying to secure and stop all of that, and once you get all that stopped, then you can start planning for, so now what do you want to do after that? And so we have been spending six years sort of putting out the fires and stopping the water main breaks and putting electricity back into play. And so now we're at a place where we can think about where do we want to go and how do we get there?
What will it take to get there?
So from a budget standpoint, I think that is the good news, that we are at a stable place, so now we can start having, we can look in a different place. We don't have to look this way, we can now look this way and start having that conversation. So.
No, no.
My only comment was that I, the other thing that I don't think we often do is think, which in other places I think we do this, is like you think a few years out, and you say, well, I think this year we can do this much, but then maybe after that we can do this much, and then after that maybe we can do this much, so that you aren't sort of tied to either being able to do it now or not doing it at all. And I think that's a different way of thinking, that we need to get into doing more of, so that we don't feel like we're failures if we don't get to it this year, but we're moving in the direction that we want to go.
I think a lot of what's going to drive what we're going to be able to do as a city and what we're going to need to do as a city is going to be driven by our population growth projections over the next 20 or so years. And, you know, right now, I know that there's a 53-home development that is getting ready to be developed on the other side of Barger. For me, there's another subdivision that's being developed. And so the question is going to be, you know, how is the city going to keep pace with that growth, and what does that growth look like? And what are the services going to look like on a, instead of looking at a, you know, we're going to look at five-year horizons and 10-year horizons, what is it going to look like in 20 years? What is this going to look like in, you know, 2035? And it's really important that we do real robust conversations around how we plan for that now, instead of waiting and some, you know, if my sons are still around here, my daughter, you know, because they're trying to leave here as they, as we speak. If they're going to be here, and the people who are going to live here, what is this community ultimately going to look like? Because what we do now has a lot to do with what Eugene is going to be in 20 years. And if we're not careful, we end up making some of the mistakes that other communities have around the country, and then we get caught flat-fall it being under-capitalized, under-resourced, and, you know, not able to handle the demands that, you know, citizens or the expectations citizens have of their municipal government.
Just thinking about the mayor's story of the mayor who went to replace the streetlight and discovered this part of town never was complaining about their lack of streetlights. And if we have a budget where we're not proposing cuts, we may find ourselves having crickets at our budget committee hearings, or we may not. But it might be an opportunity for us to really think about those folks we haven't heard from, who don't identify the budget committee as a place for them to try to get their needs met. And I'm not thinking of a good example right now, but I think that could be, you know, an opportunity, as you're saying, to look forward and to think about the voices that aren't always in our ear, but that we know because we're paying attention, are out there and have needs that are not being met.
That's sort of the equity lens that we should be looking at. And when we look at things, it's not just who's, because we're complaint-driven, it's how you get beyond being complaint-driven to really being, using an equity lens to look, to look at things, to be sure that everybody, and in the case of those lights, what they ended up with is they, they know the lifespan of the bulbs. So they put those on a track, and it doesn't matter what part of town you're in, your lights will all get changed on that year, so that there's equity, not just driven by complaints. It's sort of thinking in that, which is a different way of thinking than we do in many things.
So at this point, we were, we were planning to take a break, but we're a little bit ahead of our agenda, so I'd like to, yes, break, break, break. Okay. So how about we take a 15-minute break? It is now, I'm going to call it 25 of, so how about we come back and have 10 of, 10 of seven?
Well, maybe.
When we do that, when we come back, we will be gathering, councilors and executive team, we will be gathering in small groups in the back of the room. So I will suggest that you sit, you try to have equal numbers of councilors and staff people in those groups, and try to mix it up a little bit, and associate yourself with some people you haven't sat with lately. And I'll give you further instructions when we get back to our break. And those in these groups with four to five, okay?
Good. Thanks for the email. Ooh, watch out behind you. Councillor Fair.
Really what they're, that's the ask. They're just bringing something to us that they care deeply about and they feel the community needs to deal with. And it's very hard, because we don't have any easy answers. But if we listen and then try to figure out what we can do and then align it with our staff, then we find ways to move forward. And I think sometimes we think, and we talk about these things, as our goals, and I think that's maybe the piece that's missing, is that we have to more often frame things in, we heard you, and now we're trying to do something about it for you, and here's what we're going to try to do. So I'm thinking there's a piece here that can move us into the future in a, in a way that I think we all want to do, the community engagement piece, which is really around how we talk about why we take things up and why we're doing them. And I don't think anybody in this room does them, because we think it would be a swell fun thing for us to do for ourselves. I think those are, these are all things that everybody at this table wants to do for the community, but we've got to be able to say that in a way that the community understands that we heard, and we're trying to respond, and we appreciate that you brought these, and we're going to work on these till we solve them together.
So I think, I think I'm hearing a couple things. One, and at the risk of being a little redundant.
Yes.
That it sort of begins with the council, of the council being able to work together on policy and getting clear what the policies and principles are going to be, and then collaborating with staff with, in a high-trust relationship, and that that begins to set a template, or, you know, like a seed crystal for that kind of listening and communication trust building that can happen within the larger community of input coming in, listening to the community, and then developing policies and procedures that are going out. Yes?
No.
Okay. So correct me.
I think it's, that's what we have been doing. I think the part that maybe we're missing is a part that actually says, before we began to make this policy, before we began to talk about this, we actually heard this from you. And it's because of you that we're doing this. It's not because we think we're brilliant people. And I think that's the part that probably we could do a better job of expressing. Chief was talking about this earlier in terms of the conversation with the community about what the police are doing. I mean, I think those are all part of how you, and you all talk about it in different ways, but it really is the truth, that the reason you want to save the headwaters is because the people in this community want to save those headwaters and want them for the future of this community, and all the things we talk about. We don't talk about the library because it looks pretty. We talk about the library because we want this great place of opportunity for the children of this community, and they tell us they value that. I just want to sort of switch the order of it a little bit, where it's not so much about us, it's about them and the future of the community, and we just happen to be sort of the conduits for this to happen.
So I guess I'm hearing that the community is at the beginning.
At the beginning.
And at the end.
Yes.
Of that process.
Yep.
That you're doing your job properly, you're a sense organ for what is happening and needs to happen.
Yeah, what, the kind of light bulb that went off for me was, a lot of times we approach the city council as being the center of the universe, and all things converge on the city council, and that then becomes the important element. And that really shouldn't be the city council that's at the center of the universe, it's really the decision. It's really the decision or the outcome that's at the center. And we're just simply one of those elements that feeds into it. And where the public has felt disenfranchised is that this decision in the middle, the primary conduit to it, was maybe the city council and the staff, and they felt that there was no conduit for them, not a sincere one at least. And that what we need to do is to demonstrate that the path to that decision also has a mechanism or conduit where they also have directed put in some influence on that decision. Because I often hear people say, this decision's already been made. Why should I be a participant? Why should I have a stake in it? Because it's already, you know, you've all come into this decision, and it's all a done deal. And we need to convey the sense that, no, this decision will be made through a process that also incorporates your participation and involvement in it. And we've not really had a good mechanism to do that. We're building it, we're creating those mechanisms even as we speak, but we haven't traditionally had them. But I'm encouraged that we're starting to create them.
You know, there's, you know, when you look at these things up on the walls, staring at them, there's that goal, strategy, outcome, you got the goal, and the strategies of how we came up with all these accomplishments. And sometimes it's not just about the city council goal, but these are really broad overarching ones that the community has impacted us on.
Exactly.
And, you know, some of, a lot of the homeless things, the, the children on the public trust document about the kind of recovery ordinance, and Civic Stadium, and all these things that we're working on are really coming from.
Community.
The community, the public. And, and they're finding their way through these things into energies that we all work on. And when they come into alignment, that's when they happen fast and smooth and easy. And when they don't come into alignment is when, when they're not so fast and smooth, they don't get accomplished.
So.
If you went back and you looked at all these outcomes or accomplishments, there was a goal or a community request. I'll talk about the squeaky, that government works on the squeaky wheel theory, which is kind of the same thing we were talking about. The, the people who come squeaking a lot get paid attention to that issue, and that's how things get done.
So I think I'm hearing we're starting to shift into some themes. What are some themes and common ground? And so one of the ones that I'm hearing is about public engagement, in, in whatever form, whether that's, you know, squeaky wheel, or, or proactively going out into the community, trying to figure out, as we spoke about earlier, who are some of the voices that are not being heard, and where can we go find those and, and gather their, so we sit their input. And that this is something that you are proud of, the degree to which that's been done in the last several years, because you've done a huge amount of work in a much more engaging vein than, than has been done prior. And you also want to continue to, to improve that by putting even more public engagement and public listening up front in the process, earlier in the process, is what I'm hearing.
And I think what I was trying to say too, and this, again, it's just me, but I, I was just pushing for us to frame it in the context that we exist to, to really provide community with what they need and want. So they're, that's why it's, they're at the front end of the, of the conversation. It's a framing thing that I think could help us with a lot of other things that we're trying to do.
Alan, what you, what I thought I heard you say was that a significant way that several things get accomplished is you have the squeaky wheel, and these things accomplished. And I, what I heard, part of the other conversation was, is, yes, maybe that's true, but maybe that's not always the best way. Because not, not all the voices are, an interesting variety of voices are at the table at that moment. And so the squeaky wheel has a sort of an issue, and then we do something about that, but that may or may not have been, sort of, of all the things that we could spend time on, that may or may not have been the, the best thing that I could spend time on. And so how do you engage the community in a way to, to not just have the squeaky wheel be the driver of the agenda? And part of, I think, envision Eugene's an interesting conversation around that. We could purposely set out to have it less about a squeaky wheel or a political solution. And it's been exhausting, I mean, in some ways, with the amount of people that show up, and it's not finished yet. But it probably, I think, very few people that want to be represented in that, or how I would say, didn't have a chance to have a voice in that. And so it'd be interesting to see how that comes out. So I was just thinking about, is it, is it the squeaky wheel that's, that we want to have the squeaky wheel drive the agenda? Or is that, yes, we've, we heard, we understand, it's important input, but it's not the only part of the, of the story that we want to hear?
I think the squeaky wheel theory isn't that the squeaky wheel people propose, bring up this issue, have a proposal, and then do it. It's more that the squeaky wheel theory is that they bring up this issue, enough public concern gets bubbled up to the level of the councils and county meetings and public community conversation, so that maybe there, that person who brings it up or that group has a specific agenda or idea. But when you bring it into this bigger arena, it gets a broader discussion, more constituencies pay attention to it, more input, more perspectives, and different perspectives impact it, so that it doesn't necessarily end up where they thought it was going to go. It might end up over here. I mean, a great example is the homelessness issue. I think a lot of it has to do with how much people brought this issue up over and over and over again, and their ideas isn't where we ended up. Ended up, I think, in a better place, because there was engagement of a lot of different perspectives that got us to a different, a different solution that I think worked. But I think it's, you know, it's not the only way that things get brought into the community conversation. You know, the individuals, individual council ideas, councillor ideas, or the mayor's ideas, or staff's ideas get brought into the, and those are kind of the easy, more traditional ways of doing it. But the community's way of impacting that conversation is kind of through the squeaky wheel theory.
Well, I mean, here's, here's a thought. People who are consistently engaged in this community usually come from three wards, one, two, and three. And it becomes issue-specific when there is an issue that affects one ward or one part of the city, go back to the library issue. When we talked about, you know, Bethel Library closing, and possibly Sheldon closing, that brought out community interest from those parts of the community.
Right.
Normally don't ever come out, or hardly ever come out. I, I can sit there over the last two years, and I can count on the fingers of one hand how many people from Ward 6 come all the way downtown to testify on anything. But when we started talking about closing the Bethel Library, then, you know, everybody, I started getting emails and, you know, telephone calls and a whole bit from, you know, every part of, you know, Bethel and Sheldon.
That's engaging.
And that's, that, you know, but, but that's, that's crisis kind of, you know, crisis engagement. You know, you're going to take away my library? Oh, you know, that goes through the community like wildfire. You want to talk about envision Eugene? It's like, ugh. I'm just being real. I mean, that's what, that's the reaction in my neighborhood. Huh? Because it's just the way it is, you know? I mean, are you one of?
All right, we're closing the library.
But I mean, you know, over time, that's, that's kind of where it is, and there needs to be some kind of way that we can, you know, engage the rest of the community in a, in a more robust way that, that, that gets other opinions, you know, into the mix, out on the table, and, you know, gives us better information by which we can, you know, give staff better direction in terms of what our policy looks like.
To refine that one more point, there's two types of ways things get on the table. One is reactive, squeaky wheel theory, and the other is proactive, where you actually have an agenda, you go through and you figure out what you want to do. Reactive, easy, it comes to you, you don't do anything. Proactive is very, very difficult. When we did all these bubble diagrams back in 1990, that was an amazing effort to do. You can't, we don't have the resources to continually do that, and be proactive about, you know, figuring out what the biggest bubbles were, and then create strategies to, to deal with those, because we went and asked people. So it, and we could do that on a, on a regular basis, but it can't be very frequent.
The challenge with engagement, though, to, to tell a story that illustrates your point, we were once appointing members to a committee, I can't remember which committee it was, it was an ad hoc committee that's going to do severely significant work. And each council member got to appoint members to this committee. And some of the council members said, well, I'm going to take the usual suspects, the people that are engaged and want to be involved. And I thought, you know, I'm going to try something different. I'm going to ask staff to go to the phone book and call every nth number on the phone book and say, would you like to serve on this committee? The city's putting you in the committee, we'd be interested. You've been picked at random to serve on this committee and provide input to represent hundreds of other people. And they must have called 20 different people randomly in the phone book to ask them if they would serve on this committee, and not one of them wanted to do it. And so you're trying to figure out how to create, no, not one. I was appalled. I thought I had this great idea, and it just fell flat on its face. And, but the lesson it taught me was, you can't just expect people to be engaged because you want them to. There's got to be some sort of a mechanism, and the squeaky wheels are the people who traditionally run things, because they're the only people that get off their butts and come downtown and testify at meetings. But that's not the way it's supposed to be. But I'm flummoxed in trying to generate engagement. Nobody wants to do it.
So, I mean, I'm going to have people to raise hands for a bit, because we're, we're focusing on this one area, which is really important, about public engagement. So there are a number of, you know, it sounds like you're doing more public engagement, and you want to improve that even further. There are some challenges around that, including the, you know, squeaky wheel can be a positive thing, or it can ensure that you're just getting input from a narrow segment. Some of the challenges around wanting broader input, and how to do that in a way that it's not being triggered by negative things happening in your neighborhoods. So I'm just wondering if, so we talked a lot about public engagement, are there some other themes or common ground that you were hearing before we, before we close?
That he hasn't talked before.
Yes.
I want to say something about citizen engagement. We used to have a group called the Public, the Citizen Involvement Committee. And part of those people were appointed by the neighborhoods, and part of them were chosen from the voter rolls. And I don't, it wasn't from the telephone, but from the voter rolls. And they did serve, and they, and some of those people later became very involved in the, in city affairs, who were just picked out, they were called and asked if they'd like to be on the Citizen Involvement Committee. We haven't had that for some years now, but when I was first on council, I served on that committee with some of those people who started that way. And sometimes they then got involved in another committee, they got interested just because they had been asked to be, they were on the committee with some councilors and some neighborhood leaders, and they felt it was an important position, and they stayed interested. And I've asked many times to reinstate the Citizen Involvement Committee, but it hasn't happened.
Okay. So that's one idea. Let's go back to Councilor Sarette and Mayor.
So, and I don't want to get too down in the week on this topic, but I think it is important. I think that's really revealing. I think people can be very intimidated by the idea of, you want me to serve on a committee? And what does that mean? And who am I? Why would you ask me to do that? And, and earlier, as we were going around best or worst outcomes, Kristy, you started to say something about youth involvement, and, and then you cut yourself off. But I think, thinking about non-traditional ways to engage people and to engage youth, where they're, by their nature, are non-traditional, because they don't know the traditions, right? You know, could be something that we aspire to add to our robust community involvement. You know, people come down and speak to us at council, and if it's their first time, I hear them walk back to their seats and say, I was so nervous. And I remember being really nervous when I first talked before council, too. And so, you know, I think we all understand that, but finding ways to make an inviting space for people to come, to, to go to them and listen to them, I think, is, is maybe a further goal for us as an organization.
I just want to make the case that I think we have to recognize we do a lot of that. And we have the Sustainability Commission, we have the Planning Commission, we have the Police Commission, we have all these places, we have the Sister City Programs, we have all these places that people are participating in our city, and, and then we have tons of volunteers who participate all over the place. These are, there are a lot of different ways people participate in the community, and, and have their voices heard in different ways in the community as well. So, and I just want to bring up something that I don't think we brought up at all tonight is, our, some of our commissions feel like they don't know what use they are to us. They go to those meetings, they participate, they work really hard, and are not at all convinced, when they bring forward anything to us, that we will hear them at all. And, and I, I know we recently lost somebody on the Sustainability Commission, because they just got tired of, of doing that. And it's something for you all to think about, because it's not that you have to do what they say, perhaps we don't have to say to them, we don't want to have to do what you say, but, but it is that they want to be taken seriously, because you asked them. You asked them to do this. That's the same thing that you're talking about, you're asking people to participate. Well, if you're asking people to participate, then they have to actually feel like you care about what they have to say. And you have to find some way to show them that you care about what they have to say. And so the last thing, latest thing I heard was, well, somebody comes out of the blue to your council, to your council meeting, they bring up X, and you all leap out of your seats to fall over yourselves to do something for it. I've been serving you for one, two, three years, and you don't leave out of your seat ever to pay attention to what I say. In fact, you won't even give me the courtesy of letting me speak before anybody else, because I've come from a commission that you've appointed. You don't give me any, you give me no understanding that you appreciate what I do in my service to you at all. So I just want to put this out in front of you, that those folks are sitting there, they have already said, yes, they are volunteering their time for us on a very rigorous basis. And you really need to take seriously how we should treat them, how we should use the information they give us, what kind of, we give back to them, how we let them know what we want. I think it's a really important thing. And there's, gosh, I don't know how many of those there are, Michael, there's between the Human Rights Commission to the, there's just a.
The library, I think.
So I'm, I think, while you're trying to stretch your head about how to be more inclusive, you've got a bunch of people that are already at the table, and they're not sure you care.
So.
I have another opportunity that's not community engagement.
Okay.
Although I think that's a great topic, I have some other thoughts on that, but not for the moment.
Okay.
We heard quite a bit around library, the future of the library, and also parks and recreation operations and maintenance, as opportunities.
Also investments, investments in that infrastructure.
Parks and libraries, investments in that infrastructure. So, so those are.
One of the other themes I heard was doing more of the things that have worked. So, you know, opportunity villages, expand on that. This is, parks is great, this is great, let's do this, let's do more of that. So it's all, it's about.
Economic development.
Yeah, economic development. Done some really great things in downtown, let's keep going with it. So it's more like, I guess the theme would be, let's capitalize on the things that have worked and we've done well with, and make them even go further.
I'm not sure, I don't feel like I really got what you're saying.
I think what the conversations have been, one about really capital investments in parks and recreation facilities. I think that's part of what Greg's been talking about quite a bit. But it's also, and library would be a piece of that as well, but it's also the opportunity to say, where do we really want to be with the library and parks of the future? And how do we get there? And part of that has been really on the O and M side, as well as the capital side. to say, where do we really want to be with the library and parks of the future? And how do we get there? And part of that has been really on the O and M side as well as the capital side.
So, other themes, so far we're hearing, public engagement, parks and libraries, identifying and building on things that are working already. Any other overarching themes that you, that you heard before we end?
Well, you know, there's another piece with public safety, too. This came up in one of our conversations, I think that John, you know, sparked it, was, you know, when I came here 30 years ago, my view of the Eugene Police Department was extremely negative, and so were those interactions. And that's changed almost 180 degrees. And it's in large part due to what, you know, Pete has done, changing the culture of the department, and, you know, some personnel changes, some people retire, some people move on, whatever, got pushed out, whatever the case may be. But it's a, we don't have the kind of friction in the communities, particularly in communities of color, that you have in other communities and other cities. And that's a major asset in terms of, well, the fire merger with Eugene Springfield has been also another major asset there. And I think that those are two areas that we have an opportunity to build upon.
So, the fire merger and public safety, in fact, that we're already doing well.
Doing well and getting better.
I heard him mention public safety first and then fire.
Public safety first.
That's just what I heard.
You were correct, you were correct.
I remember when you were merged.
Yeah, me, too.
The other part of that is the auditor, and the way that that's been working together. And the part that I like the most about it is, and it's the way the ordinance was supposed to work, is you identify, you're not trying to find people doing things wrong, you're just trying to find ways to improve. And so, if you identify something that needs to improve, you try to make those improvements happen, because the goal of the department is to be better all the time. So, I think that is something that has been happening, and it's really good, and should continue, and we should be, you know, keeping our eyes on that. And I wanted to recommend that, I don't know whether you come to us with the Police Commission report to the council or not, but I think, Chief, that we get a lot of time with our planning and development folks, we get a lot of time with other parts of the organization, but we don't often hear from you in a way where you tell us what's going on in the department, and what you're thinking about, and those kinds of things. And I think that would be really good for us to hear, and that may be best in the context of the Police Commission report or something like that. But I just think it would be, for me, it would be really great if you would just come and let us know what you're thinking and what you're working on.
Thank you. So, I hear there's a whole cluster there with public safety, fire, and--
Then.
We said--
You're sitting right next to her.
And also the auditor's office, what's going on with that. So, before we close, is there one more burning theme that we haven't named yet? Understanding, understanding, we're going to get to take this up.
Burning.
Sorry.
Good with reading.
Long metaphor.
Yeah. Compelling. Is there one thing that compellingly needs to be spoken that we need to not forget before we close for the evening? Understanding that we're going to be able to continue this conversation at another meeting very soon. So, all those things that come to you in the shower, in the middle of the night, you can jot them down and bring back.
I don't know if this is burning necessarily, but it is warming in terms of the city's leadership around climate change, but also our culture we've developed around sustainability and having that triple bottom line. And as I said, in our small group, we still have more places I think that can be more robust, but I think we deserve a lot of credit as a city for really taking that seriously and looking for ways to be innovative around the issue of climate change and how sustainability as a model can help us with that.
It's taken a lot of work to get to meet those, that Climate and Energy Plan's going to take a lot, a lot, a lot of work, so.
Great, thank you so much. So, I'm going to invite you to think between now and when we meet again about, are there other themes that you heard that didn't get listed? And you can bring those back to us. So, at this point, we just want to take a look at our next steps. So, all these wonderful notes are going to get typed up by the scribes, hopefully, and merged into some documents. Can you tell us a little more? Do you know anything more about that? Who's the expert on--
I just became the expert.
Okay.
No, I think, you know, our intent was always to try to be a little bit flexible in the process and see how this evening went, not knowing, was this something you already easily come to some agreements on, or we needed to keep working. And so, I think the goal will be to take all of the documents, all of the words, we'll capture all of those words and keep them, but probably try to find those theme areas to bring back for discussion about how you may want to either revise those, drill down, just kind of see where we're at. So, I think it would be helpful if we had a chance to kind of get those themes, probably continue to meet with a couple of council leaders around just ideas for how we process this next.
I think one of the important pieces is thinking about, for the couple of councillors that weren't here tonight, how do they become a part of the conversation in a meaningful way, having not actually heard this part so much? My guess is, if you listen to the tape, you have a hit and miss, right? So, I think that's part, we probably just need to think about how to bring them into the conversation.
Okay, so, at this point, all of this information's going to go to that small group of council leaders.
Yeah, we'll capture it all, and then there's been this planning committee, that's been the mayor, Claire, and Chris, as well as Sarah, me, and myself to put tonight together. And then we'll think about, so what do we do from here, given this information? So, we'll be getting together again and seeing where you want to head with this.
Okay, so, stay tuned. And before we close for tonight, I'd like to start from we start with you, if you're ready to go. And just tell me five or 10 words or less, either something you learned this evening or something that you're taking away with you from our conversations. And if you're not quite ready when we get to you, I'm going to want to go around clockwise, if we're not quite ready when we get to you, just feel free to pass, you can come back.
I really enjoyed the proud, what we're proud of, the reflection on the successes, and it just reinforces a lot of the commonality. A lot of thinking is shared, kind of vision for how we move forward, and I think that's really positive. Thank you, guys, it's been enjoyable.
What I, the themes that I saw and heard were that had to do with how we had come together in order to solve large problems, like how we were going to improve downtown. And the other thing is that the squeaky wheel, the connotation of that sort of suggests insignificance or irrelevance, and sometimes it's hard to know when the squeaky wheel is significant, but maybe not relevant to the current, you know, work plan.
Pass.
Just nice to realize that a lot of the things that we're all proud of, we share with elected officials, the things that we see as opportunities are common in a lot of ways, so I think it bodes well for the future.
I heard a lot of the same things expressed by a good chunk of this group. It's really easy at times to forget that more often than not, whether it's the execs or the council, or all of us together, are in alignment far more often than the few times when the council may have a four-to-four split. But it's a lot easier to focus on or remember the four-to-four split. That's the exception, and I think the kind of agreement that people were expressing today, I think, is the norm. And so, that's nice to think about.
I just see a lot of real energy and enthusiasm about what we can all accomplish together in this coming year, and being able to reflect on these accomplishments, I think, really is motivating and exciting, so I'm feeling good.
I guess I would just say I didn't find any surprises tonight. I was really pleased to hear the budget where we are and the opportunities that we have, and I was also pleased to see all the things that we've all done together. I guess the only other comment I would make is that I want to recognize that in everything that we feel proud of, that there's always people who have different opinions, and those are valuable in the conversation.
I was going to say, I'm really happy that we can think about something other than filling gaps, both internal to the organization as well as at this body and in the community. And to me, that portends sort of some pretty exciting conversation as we go forward, and so I really am looking forward to that.
You know, I learned that this group, even from the first couple of words the mayor said about this isn't a retreat, it's how we move forward, and I think that energy is the same in the organization, as we've been kind of talking to employees and leadership within the organization about where we're at. Everybody seems ready to say, wow, that was great, good work, hard work, let's keep moving forward, and that's really, really exciting group and people to be a part of. I'm happy to be here.
I'll pass.
I just had a really great time listening to the conversation tonight, and also was inspired and motivated by the sense of pride that we all have for what we've been able to accomplish. And I think one of the things that really struck me is the groups, one of the first group that I was in, just talked a lot about the, how it looks, the way that we work and how it looks, not necessarily what we accomplish, but the way that we get there and how important that is. And so, that made me feel really good.
I was really engaged in the conversation around the themes, because I think that's a great basis for figuring out how we're going to work together, and the kinds of things on which we find agreement, and some of the processes and mechanisms that would work well for us. And so, now, I'm very keen to see how we can take that conversation and begin to apply it to some of the specific work products we need to come up with, budget products, development products, you know, there's a whole series of products we can work on, and I'm very keen to see how we can take this work and be able to use it effectively to apply to those. So, this doesn't just become an academic conversation, it's something we can take to our work and use it effectively, because I think it could be used that way.
I learned that we have a lot of common ground, and that we share a lot of pride in the accomplishments we've made.
I was impressed by all the accomplishments that are up there, and then how easily we filled pages and pages with things that we were proud of. And we don't lose that, and I hope we can actually convey it and share it to employees and also the public, and I think that's real important. And I'm really looking forward to a boring budget.
Teeners.
Taylor?
I was impressed by how clever Sarah is, really do that, and how much fun the chief of police is.
Don't tell him that.
I have well-kept secrets.
In fact, Betty, he loves hugs. You will not blush. I wonder recording the next senior staff meeting. You know, I have nothing profound to add, but, you know, I think we have a pretty great team here. And I think that's reflective in everything that has been said tonight, what's all on the, you know, wall, and I just think I'm looking forward to great things in the future. And I think that this is a very good start towards that.
Thank you all, councillors and staff, for your wonderful work, abundant work in giving us better-- Eugene?
All right, with that.